Reconvening the Board of Education meeting at 7:15 PM. I would make an announcement that in our earlier session, we did take a vote and supported Carolyn Locke to be the new member of the Board of Education for District 208. So I'd like to welcome Carolyn officially to the Board of Ed.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have recognitions this evening. Dr. Freitas?
No recognitions at the moment. All four athletes and club members of EXEL will be recognized in December.
Okay, thank you. And do we have any visitor statements? Not seeing any. We're moving on to reports. The Student Association is not on the agenda tonight. President's report, it just went out of order. I announced our new board member. Superintendent's report, please.
Superintendent's report. The District Wide Communications Survey has been distributed. The survey window closes on November 22. Additional paper copies are available in the district office. Those also went out to all households, not just students and parents or staff. I believe we're close to just over 400 responses as of yesterday. The new divisional positions that were approved in the new collective bargaining agreement have been posted. Tentative timeline for this position is conduct interviews in December and bring forward hiring recommendations to the Board in January. District calendar is on the agenda tonight for first read. This calendar was developed with input from the Culture and Operations Committee. Again, a new committee established under collective negotiations. The calendar was also shared and discussed with all the feeder district superintendents at a meeting on November 9. I'd like to personally thank the Brookfield and Riverside Police and Fire Departments for providing an escort through town last Saturday for our boys' state champion cross-country team. Families and students really appreciated that. And thank you, obviously, to Dr. Freitas and Assistant Principal Mr. Curtin for helping to organize that. But most importantly, thank you to our first responders who played a role in providing those gentlemen a first-class escort back to the school. Lastly, District 28, Riverside, Brookfield High School celebrated Veterans Day on Friday, November 11. We brought back the breakfast, assembly, and classroom visits that traditionally occurred prior to the pandemic. So thank you to everyone who planned and participated in the event to make this a special day for all of our veterans. It really was a group effort from Quest Preparing a Great Breakfast, Dr. Freitas and his staff organizing all the veterans in the assembly, Sandy Chika, John Fields, Mr. Baum, and all the students that participated in the bands orchestras to play the military songs. It was really a great event. Our students were first class in their behavior, so it really was a nice event last Friday. In regards to superintendent advisory councils, no new updates for curriculum, facilities. We're still waiting on an update on the progress of the design and bid documents, so we'll schedule a meeting for that once the HVAC documents for the summer '23 are completed. Finance Advisory Council met this past Wednesday to discuss the review, the audit, the levy, and the enrollment staffing projections that will be discussed tonight. Personnel Advisory Council, no new updates, no new updates from policy. I did receive a new press packet from IASB, so I will work with my advisory council and I will most likely, Ms. Locke, I'll use you. Ms. Towner used to sit on the policy council with myself and Ms. Ruska, so I'll probably be requesting your services to help me with that. Okay? And then purchase, sale, or lease of land, no update. And that is it for superintendent's report for November 15, 2022.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Was the communications survey, was that distributed in just English? Or?
It went out to all students, all staff, all parents via email, and then it also went out paper copies to each household. And there's a link on the survey that if you needed a translator, you could click that link, select the language, and then you could take the electronic version in a different language.
Okay. I just think it would be helpful to also send out a Spanish version because my parents only speak mainly Spanish, and they receive the English one in the mail. And so I think that could increase maybe comments and participation.
Okay. Yeah, we tried to address that in that the announcement went out in both English and Spanish, and it should have explained in that announcement where they can get the bilingual version of the survey. So there is a bilingual version out there. If they can go in through the code they got sent, or if you could help them go in through the code, you can see that it is, there is an opportunity to take it in Spanish.
But I think that's Paulina's point, is now you're making them go through that extra step, and they might not.
Yeah, it could be more accessible.
Yeah. Thank you, Paulina.
So that's a good point you raise. So future communications on this, can we make, confirm they'll be in both English and Spanish? The follow-up reminders?
So do we have, like, paper copies in Spanish? If we made, and this is a question, if we made paper copies in Spanish available at the library and the school office?
I could check to see if we could have paper copies in Spanish printed.
Would that help? You know, just?
I think that's what you were asking.
Right. So would your parents have come to the school office or the library to pick up a Spanish version?
I mean, maybe, but I just think it would be better if it were mailed.
Yeah, if that would have come out first. Yeah.
Anything else? Comments? Appreciate the feedback. Dr. Smetanov?
Good evening. Tonight I'll provide the Board of Education with the financial information for the month of October, which represents 33% of our fiscal year. Beginning on Board Book Page 8, you'll see our monthly summary report, which shows that the total operating revenue for the month was $1,271,801, with 32% coming from local payments, 24% coming from federal and state reimbursement, and 21% coming from CPPRT. The total operating expenditures for the month were $2,259,687, with 76% towards salary and benefits, 8% towards purchased service, and 6% on non-capital items, and primarily that was the security cameras that was previously approved by the Board, and then 6% on operations and maintenance as well. On the next page begins a monthly financial statements. Summary of fund balances shows that the district continues to deficit spend in its operating funds until we receive our revenue from the fall property tax collection, which, as you know, we normally receive in August, and we will hopefully start receiving some of that money in December. Due to the Board-approved working cash loan, that was approved at the last board meeting, these accounts will have sufficient funds. You should see that being reflected in next month's statements. The next page represents the summary of revenues, which shows that the district has received 9.9% of our budgeted revenue for the year. This is down considerably from this time last year, which was 45.3%. And again, that's due to the delay in property tax revenue. The summary of expenditures shows that the district has spent 35.9% of the budgeted expenditures for this year, and this is tracking to this amount last year, which was 35.2%. As always, I've included the statement of revenue and expenditures for the month, which lists all the revenue and expenditures for the board accounts and compares budget to actual for each of those accounts, as well as the student activity account summaries. Next, I'll pause for questions if there's any on that before I jump to the staffing and enrollment projections for the following year.
And our fund balances and our revenue and our expenses, that's all on the cash basis, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
So beginning on Board Book Page 29 begins--
Actually, Dr. Smetanov, I have one quick question. When you do the fund report, is that then, just for my clarification, that is available to the public following a board meeting?
Correct.
Okay, so individuals could see the various fund accounts for sports activities, et cetera? Okay, thank you.
And the recent law change says we have to publish that, but we actually publish it every meeting, right?
Correct.
For every business--
It's part of the board--
Yes, we've been doing that for years. Just, I always write it in my report, but if anyone is choosing to look at the activity accounts, it's important to remember that it's flips. So if there's a negative fund balance, that actually means a positive amount of money.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'll jump to the staffing and enrollment projections for the '23-'24 school year, and this begins, I believe, on Board Book Page 28 would be a good place to start. If you zoom in on this page, it might be, yeah, there you go. You can see that this is the final staffing summary for this current year, the 2022-23 school year. So this report not only shows the FTE allocation for the year, which is on the left half of the page, and as you can see, we're at 107.4 FTE, right at the bottom. And if you are looking on the right portion of this page, this shows the average class sizes in various formats. When you're looking at this, it's important to keep in mind, we have three different class size guidelines that we use. We use a 30-to-1, a 25-to-1, and a 40-to-1. And the goal is to try to schedule within plus or minus 2 of that class range. So if it's at 25-to-1, we try to schedule between 23 and 27 students in there. So you can see that the overall class average without the 40-to-1 classes is 24.61. And if you go below that, you'll see that the average class size for core classes is 24.18, and that's decreased, you know, every year, and that the class size for interventions is 18.85 this year. On the next page is an update of classes that we brought to the Board in March for either approval or just for information. And we're providing information as to where these classes were in March and how many students we have in each of these classes in September. So the first chart were for classes that we brought to the Board for approval because they were under 20 students. The next chart consists of classes that are only offered one time a day, and that were, there were two under the cap or more in March, but they were not under 20. And then the last chart were classes that were only offered one period a day that were more than two students over the cap. On the next page is the feeder school enrollment spreadsheet from the 2022-2023 school year. We wanted to provide what we look at. One more page, Mary Ann.
Mary Ann, we need you to scroll one more page. I'm sorry.
One more.
One more blank page. One more. There we go.
So this page outlines the feeder school enrollment spreadsheet that we use to drive our enrollment projections. So every year, we're collecting information from all of our feeder schools going down to three-year preschools so that we can start to see enrollment trends. Certainly, the closer we get, the more accurate we'll get, as we know that students move in and out of our feeder schools, just like they do us as well. So if we can go to the next page, you'll see, and I know that this is probably a little hard to read, but you'll see that this is our enrollment for this year as well as our projection. So if you can see in the gray box closest to the blue column, we're currently at 1,677 for our students, and at this time last year, we projected our enrollment would be at 1,692. This 1,677 includes all of our students, as that is students that are outplaced or students that are receiving transition services as well. To get to next year's projection, that blue column, we use 91.6% of the feeder enrollment in eighth grade. That is historically the average that we receive from the students in eighth grade. And so that gives us the 397, which is that first number in the blue column. And then next, we always add 1% to this year's freshmen, sophomores, and juniors as they move over a column to account for transfers. So using that process, our estimated total enrollment for next year is 1,679 students, which includes approximately 17 transition students. And if you look at the bottom of the chart and do some math, you can tell we anticipate having approximately 26 outplaced students. At this point, it's hard to predict both of those numbers, so that's our best guess. And this means that the total number of students in the building that we anticipate taking five or more classes next year should be approximately 1,636 students.
And that's written in the small font below the blue line in that box.
And so before we jump to the next page, I just wanted to point out, we've been talking about this for some time, but, so pretty much from this year to next year, we anticipate our enrollment staying steady, you know, approximately being the same. And then you'll see that there is a slight decline the following year, and then a more significant decline the next few years. That pattern's been consistent with what we've been projecting, but like I said previously, the closer we get to those years, the more accurate that we get.
Are we seeing a related increase from the feeder schools at some point in the future? I haven't studied this too in depth.
Yes, at some point, it does seem to go back up. That is more in the earlier grades, so it wouldn't be for, I would say, a couple of years at least to go back up.
Second, third grade.
Yeah, about third and second grade, yeah. So moving on to the next page of the report, if we could zoom in a little bit, it might be easier to read this for the Board. But this is the tool that we use for our staffing projections. This model is just a guideline to help us determine staffing, so I'll try to walk through the process a little bit. All the way on the top left, you'll see, well, first of all, if you go to the right, one FTE is, every teacher teaches five classes, so that's the equivalent of one FTE. And then we talk about required FTE. So that's FTE for support services as well as interventions and contractual positions as well as special education. So now if you jump to the left of the spreadsheet, you'll see our budgeted FTE for this year is 108.4, and our current FTE, meaning actual bodies in the building, is 107.4. And then underneath that, we list the required FTE that we have for this year, which is 26.9 FTE. And if you look in the middle, you'll see that the first thing that we do is review the current staffing for the year. So the model shows that for this year, we need 105.4 FTE, and we're currently at 107.4 FTE. And there are a couple of reasons why these numbers don't match. But the first reason is that, the primary reason, is that the additional 2.0 is easily accounted for when you go back to the sheet of all of the courses that were listed that were either under caps or that were under 20, and we asked for the Board for approval. Because this model only accounts for if we have exactly 27 students in every class, and as we know, we're dealing with students and we're dealing with course requests and interventions, that's simply not possible. So that's why those numbers really will never match. Again, we just use this as a guideline, as a starting place to help us determine staffing. So as we look to next year, we use 97% of our projected enrollment to determine our FTE. This 3% accounts for outplaced students, homeschooled students, transition students, and students that only take credit recovery. So that gives us 1,629 students. So as you can see, Option A has the average class size of 27, and that, in addition to the 27.4 required FTE, would put us at 106.4 FTE, which is the projected required FTE, just using this model as a starting place.
So if we look at the 106.4, we're currently at 107.4. If you look to the left-hand side under the 22, 23 required FTE, that's the yellow box, required FTEs are interventions, student support services, contractual positions, special education, right? So we had 108.4 budgeted for this year. If you look down for the 22, 23, our 2023-24 school year, the projection for Option A is 106.4, and that includes, we did make some updates. We increased the instructional division, that's, excuse me. If you see in the chart above, it says instructional coaches were 1.4, so we already added in that 0.4, changing over to the divisional model. You see a TBD by literacy coaches, algebra, academic support, instructional tech, ELL and special education. At this point in time, it's too early in the staffing and, you know, transfer process. So when we get incoming eighth graders with IEPs, a lot of those meetings are being held in December, early January, before freshman picture classes, right after the first year. So we have some time, and this could be altered, but, you know, my recommendation tonight to the Board, as previously discussed, is we stay at the 108.4 for now that we have budgeted. And the idea behind that is, we're not sure, you know, we know we're going to probably need some ELL support, and the Board received a presentation from the administration about panorama and the different data that we're tracking in regards to student progress and gaps and student achievement. And so I think there could be additional interventions that would need to be added to this required FTE that at this point in time, like next year, we should at the minimum be whole to this 108.4.
And point of clarification, this is separate and apart from grant-funded positions, like the ESAR-funded positions that supplement staffing that we've added this year or since the return from the pandemic, correct?
Correct. We used, two years ago, we used ESAR funds to help support some additional activity for teachers to increase social distancing in some classes. This current year, we are not using ESAR funds for teaching positions, so--
We're using for other support services.
Correct.
Thank you.
Are there any, I have one other thing in my report. Are there any additional questions on the enrollment or staffing projections?
Again, the Board sees this in November. The idea behind this is, okay, in December, you approve a levy, so the history behind this is we do this in November because we're right in the middle. We're really starting to get into the intense part of selecting courses for current freshmen who will next be next year's sophomores, juniors, and seniors. And so the idea of this is like to give you an idea of what staffing allotment you could see when we return after the first of the year, and we start to look at budgeting processes and financial projections. You know, staffing is one of the largest expenditures the school district has, and so we give this to you in November. Now, if we get an influx of transfers or influx of special ed students with IEPs or ELL students, that's why that yellow box is kind of important to the left-hand side of the charts, because that's your required FTE. And so if we're sitting here in the springtime and the Board identifies that our SAT scores are not coming in where they're at, or we see an increase in hospitalizations or a need for more social emotional support, that staffing could change, right? But this is to start to give you an idea already of what we're looking for next year, because as soon as you come back in January, that process starts. You've approved a levy in December, the next step is then you're starting to talk about budgets in February and March. Teacher, you know, the state requirements, if you have to reduce teachers or, you know, non-renew any teachers, that happens in usually the March board meeting. So we want to get this information in your hands, so we're making informed decisions when we come back from the holidays.
Does the staff then also, like, see these at their level? Like, the different departments, do they look at that and have any input or conversation on it?
In the staffing process as a whole, yes. Each instructional coach is a part of that process, and they have individual meetings with both Kylie and Beth, and those happen in February.
And that usually gets into their expertise in the department of, it's better to run this class at 27 and this class at 23 because we might need more support or interventions for that. You know, they have the intricacies of each department to help where these teachers get assigned.
And that's happening in a January, February timeframe, right?
Correct.
And then, moving on, lastly, my report on Board Book Page 35 is, I've included the proposed timeline from DLA Architects, which is the district's architect for the replacement of two air handling units in the cafeteria and the library. Due to the significant lead time, which we've previously discussed, DLA and the administration is recommending that we purchase the two air handling units through a purchasing cooperative called AMIA, and then just go out to bid for the labor portion. This will hopefully allow the district to stay on track for completing this project towards the late half of the summer. And then the Board of Education will see this purchase approved in a subsequent board meeting once the equipment has arrived. So we'll go ahead and purchase it through this cooperative, and then, once the equipment arrives, you'll see it on board bills for payment.
And the cooperative purchasing, and we've done that in the past with large items, and because you're using an educational purchasing cooperative--
It satisfies all the bidding requirements.
All bidding requirements, correct. Satisfies all bidding requirements.
And we've used this cooperative before?
We have not used this cooperative before. There are several, but other school districts have and have had positive experiences with them.
Kristen, you have the auditor on the agenda tonight, but he is coming later, is that correct?
Correct. The auditor is under discussion items, but he should be arriving at around 8 or a little after. He's coming from another board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on Dr. Smetanov's report, staffing? Let's move on to Dr. Freitas, please.
Good evening, Iowa Board members. Tonight, I'll be quickly reviewing our Illinois report card and giving a brief summary. So my first item on the teaching and learning, we received a commendable rating. We had a strong freshman on track rate of 96%, graduation rate of 96%, and we have strong academic achievement on the SAT. On the Illinois report card, there's a comparative tool. I actually like comparing to a standard, but how the state does, they compare to schools. You can see in the comparative tools that we're doing much higher in those areas, the core areas, than some other schools as well. Areas for improvement, five essential participation rate. To get all your points, you need to hit the 95% participation rate. We haven't hit that, so we haven't got a point. That's an area of improvement. For chronic absenteeism, we were at 19%. A lot of high achieving schools saw those numbers, you know, rise, chronic absenteeism due to, right, the pandemic and us, you know, eliminating attendance in centers, right? If you're sick, please stay home. That's kind of been our message. But, you know, I'm currently working with my team on a plan on how to improve that area, and also I'm working with my team on EO projects to proficiency. So there's a lot to be proud of, but there's also some areas of improvement that I'm currently working on, my team. As far as the district equity leadership team, our next meeting is tomorrow, Wednesday, and we're still developing our goals under the five strands. For our panorama survey, our teachers continue to use the panorama dashboard to inform the practice. This is the first year, you know, so our teachers, we're all learning together and using this to improve, you know, schooling here at RB. Veterans Day repression under school culture and operation, it was fantastic. I want to say we had at least 80-plus veterans, you know. You know, our goal was to have a veteran for every second-hour teacher, and I'm really proud to see that we met that, we met that goal. And, I mean, you know, the veterans share stories of service, you know. Sometimes people think, right, militaries, you're shooting, shooting, you could be a professional, right, in the military. And when I had those conversations, I talked about, right, you became adopted, you became more, you know, informed the kids of those opportunities, because sometimes they don't know. So again, I want to thank to everybody that helped me. This was, there was like a 20-team committee that helped me with this. It was fantastic. Everybody that our superintendent mentioned. A few key events coming up. The Riverside Dance Ensemble is having their dance concert, the 17th and 18th, Thursday and Friday at 7:00 PM. It has $10 entries for adults and students getting free with an activity pass. Our fall Thanksgiving holiday break runs from November 23rd to the 25th. Coffee with the principal for parents is Wednesday, November 30th, at 9:00 AM in Room 201. College Night for Juniors is Tuesday, December 6th, from 6:00 to 7:00 in the auditorium. And then we have the holiday concerts in early December, Wednesday and Thursday, December 7th and 8th, from 7:00 to 8:30 in the auditorium. Under activities and athletics, our winter sports season has begun. Good luck to the Boys and Girls Basketball Team, Gymnastics, Boys Swimming and Diving, Wrestling, Palms and Cheer. And of course, we couldn't celebrate them enough, but congratulations to our state champion cross-country team. And then Haley Vilec, she also made history as a swimmer, being our first female All-Stater in the swimming division. So there's a lot to be proud of, and like I said earlier, all those fall athletes and club members will be recognized in December. And that concludes my principals' report.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kanona, you have your case.
Good evening, everyone. This weekend, I was at a college flying program at Smith College, and it was an amazing experience, and I got to visit the school completely for free. So I encourage any juniors and seniors to apply to those types of programs before it's too late, and to find out if that school is a good fit for you before you apply. These past two days, there were two fundraisers at the school. The gymnastics team raised money for their equipment, selling Krispy Kreme doughnuts in the morning before school and during lunch. in the morning before school and during lunch. And Student Association is raising money for Thanksgiving baskets, also during all lunches with the incentive that whichever lunch raises the most money.
We didn't forget yet.
We owe the R basket, yes.
We didn't forget yet, but that was a good reminder. Thank you.
Yes.
And both fundraisers have seemed successful so far. And that concludes my.
Apologies for the interruption. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to talk about our girls swimming and diving. And we took fifth place at the Hinsdale Central Sectional with our 200 freestyle and 400 freestyle relays taking third place overall. We also had a state qualifier, state qualifier Haley Belcheck in the 100, in the 200 free and 500 free. At the state meet, Haley made finals and took fourth place overall in the 200 freestyle. And I also applied and was accepted into the Miami University Bridges Program and I was there this weekend. This program includes a separate application process with multiple essays and letter of recommendations required. This is an overnight program that target, that targets prospective students with diverse backgrounds. If you are admitted into the university itself, this program serves as a scholarship. This program would be very beneficial to next year's seniors with diverse backgrounds because the application opens during the summer and the university pays for your transportation and hospitality, including dorm rooms and an on-campus hotel. During my stay at Miami University, I was able to meet with the professors and deans of my major and it was a very engaging opportunity. Being able to build relationships early on with faculty gave me an amazing idea of how the university operates and how they build their programs to help students succeed. I encourage all RB students to look into these types of programs because you will gain the knowledge you need to know about college firsthand. And I personally think our counselors could be able to help us find these programs because there's so many out there. I found this one on my own, but I think it would be very helpful if our counselors could like pull up a couple for us because the applications do come out in the summer. But I found this kind of like two weeks before it was due. So I think if, when we meet with our counselors, if they have anything that we could qualify for, that would be great that they could let us know.
I think that's a great suggestion. And Dr. Freitas, do you know if these are incorporated into that junior rising senior night you referenced in your remarks?
So I know they talk about a lot of programming. I'm not sure if it's this specific program at the Miami University, but they do share many opportunities. But I'll relay this message to the department.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions besides the basket that we will work on? Okay.
Thank you. And I think it's good that you're promoting that search as students get into that. And I know I'll be wearing my college sweatshirt because those applications are due, so I'll be wearing mine next week as well. It's a big deal.
Okay. Moving on to an update on district goals. I think we decided just to leave this as an agenda item, but do we want to discuss it this evening?
Yes, in the future, I think, I think we're missing the tabs for each goal. So that might have been left off putting it in the packet. So I will make sure there's updates. I just, on a monthly basis, I make sure before the packet goes out, the admin team are updating those tabs. So I will include those in the two weeks or three weeks when we have the December meeting.
Okay. Were there any comments or questions this evening on that or should we move on?
I did not receive any submitted.
Okay. We're going to take a pause on the audit report until Dr. Spatana says that we're ready to go. For your requests?
Yes, I need to find my page. Hold on, I'm sorry.
I believe we only have one.
Right. Those are submitted from Mr. Skolnick and those responses were provided and they're included in the packet for the board.
Thank you. Under additional discussion items, I just wanted to take a, I want to get a quick moment since we do have a new board member, just to touch on board organizational matters if the board collectively needs to have this discussion. I believe Dr. Skinkis was providing a copy of our rules of engagement and sort of the board rules that we operate under. I don't know, Carolyn, if you wanted to comment or have any questions, we're happy to have that conversation now or at a future meeting. And I think now that we are again at full strength, I'd like us to decide how we want to handle things like making motions and seconding them. I mean, there's, there's a couple of different ways that the board can proceed. We can take turns. We can have one person do it. I just would like to eliminate any hesitation on that and come to a decision. So thoughts from everyone else on any of the above organizational matters?
Was the way we make motions broken, that we need to fix it?
I think the vice president has historically made the motions and then we took turn seconding it. I just know since Mona's moved on, there's been a lot of my turn, your turn, and I just don't like the lack of smoothness about it, so I just like to address it. Thoughts? I'll watch for a few weeks.
And from an organization, I think I mentioned during the superintendent report, but Ms. Towner said, so we use superintendent advisory councils.
Thank you.
We only use board appoint committees if we have large-scale items like when we were doing a very large building renovations or the stadium project or. So the superintendent advisory councils is usually I ask two board members to participate with me and my administration in problem solving and discussions and then we report out on those at the committee of whole meeting. So Ms. Towner said on the curriculum and on the policy. So I think, I think the immediate need was the policy and then, you know, if there's something that arrives, a curriculum matter, you could sit on that as well. But at this time, I would ask that you sit on the superintendent advisory for policy.
I do a lot of policy in my job, so.
Okay.
And then the only other, this organizational issue was we have those, again, the rules of engagement, I'll just ask you to review them. If you have any questions, feel free to ask one of your new colleagues here and we can give you the background on, you know, submitting questions on the Monday before a board meeting with the packets that the administration doesn't have any surprises. I think it works better to run the meeting without any new questions and I think the administration appreciates having some time to prepare responses to any questions that may come up. Obviously, things arise, right? We all are struck by new matters as we read through them, but as a general rule, it's a, it's a practice that I think has worked fairly well with this board for a number of years. So thank you.
So is the vice president going to read the motions? Is that her willingness?
That's fine. I can.
I don't need a motion, have a motion.
Thank you.
Because when I came on the board, I didn't get that memo. I just always was sitting next to her and she always read. So I didn't know.
Well, I think it was simply a practice that made some efficiency. I mean, if you have, have a, you want to challenge it to be different.
I didn't know.
Okay.
So I read a few motions in the last meeting, was not knowing.
You were breaking.
Oh, we were doing that intentionally. We hadn't discussed that one moment.
Right, what?
That we would, we would rotate it around.
Right.
Until we had a.
I wasn't at that meeting.
Okay.
Anything about that?
Yeah.
Okay. So we've come to some agreement. Ms. Gaskett will read the motions. It just makes for a smoother meeting in my opinion and it probably helps with note-taking from Ms. Nardi's perspective as well. Nothing else to be said there on the motion of the motion of the motions. Consent agenda, approval of minutes. Do we have any other comments on the minutes that were, I think they were.
There were two comments submitted and the minutes were adjusted. And I did not receive any additional feedback from, those went out to the board this morning.
I think we can go ahead and have a motion on that if we could.
The board, yes, I will, I will try and get to that smooth. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on October 11th and 25th, 2022, open and closed as presented in the November 15th, 2022 board agenda packet.
Can we have a second, please?
Second.
Second for Mr. Welch. Need a roll call, please.
Mr. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Slack?
Abstain, I haven't read them.
Mr. Benhorst?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Mr. Durkum?
Yes.
Ms. Seles?
Yes.
Moving on to old business.
Mr. Welch.
Mr. Welch.
Mr. Welch?
Mr. Welch.
Did Mr. Welch vote?
He did. He said yes.
I apologize. Life safety items, do we have anything here?
No, no updates.
Okay. Do we think the auditor's coming shortly? Should we plunge into the IASB resolutions?
He texted me that he should be here around 8:00.
Okay.
Plunge away.
So I would, plunge away, okay. IASB resolutions.
Do we have a pen? If I saw I could take a.
Mary Ann, do you have an extra pen?
Yeah.
So Ms. Ruska serves as the liaison to IASB and will be our, our vote at the upcoming triple I conference this, this coming weekend. How do you want to proceed? Do you want to just read them by number and spend time and then just ask for people's up or down, thumbs up or thumbs down on each?
Either that or if anybody had one that they were contentious, I mean, if you agreed with everything they said, then it was most.
That might be a better way to do it, just any that there was problems with.
Yeah.
Okay.
Instead of going through each one.
Yeah.
I did not receive any comments, Laura. No comments were submitted from board members on any of the resolutions that I am aware of.
Let me just review my notes for one second. The only one was number two, the alternative fueled school bus funding. Their recommendation was do not adopt. If anyone else was interested, I would say do adopt. It basically looks to seek federal funding for low emissions vehicles. But I'm not going to be a stray on that one. I'm otherwise comfortable moving ahead with their recommendations.
Did anybody else feel strongly about that one or?
I mean, we have a, I would, I would agree with Ms. Ellis. I don't understand why we wouldn't push for that, but at the same time, I'm not, I don't feel strongly about it.
Okay.
Is there any that you'd like to point out that you discussed last time, like the example you gave us? Is there any of those you'd like to point specifically to us about?
Well, there was just the, the one where it was the gun sales on any organization where they recommend do not adopt. I think that one should have more clarification. Those do get kicked back and have more clarification and I think that their recommendation is that it's broad and too vague. And I bring up the, you know, the context. In Southern Illinois, you have Fleet Farm, you have Walmart, sometimes that's your only store, you know, if you're out west by McComb or some of those other little cities and that store might be in the proximity perimeter. And they do sell guns. They sell rifles and they do sell guns. They're not necessarily a gun, you know, distributor, but you know, they have that. People hunt, they use them on the farm. It's a very rural area. So I think that rule, you know, the one size doesn't fit all when you take all Illinois. And the purpose of this is you're, you're giving direction to the Illinois Association of School Boards to then charge the lobbyists what they should spend their time and effort to talk to our legislature in Springfield.
So is that a specific number and are you recommending?
I believe it was number one.
Number three.
Number three.
And are you recommending?
Yeah, and they recommend do not adopt.
And you're recommending we send it back for clarification?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with them. I, I, I just think it's too vague and I think it doesn't fit. You know, for us here in the city where we have everything, maybe we'd find, but in Southern Illinois, I think it would constrain, it would be a burden on many of our schools south of, you know, I-80.
Okay, I would, I would agree we should, I would agree with my, my opinion of the board, we should do what you're recommending and send it back for clarification.
Well, just to be clear, IASB's recommendation was do not adopt.
Yeah.
So that was IASB's recommendation was.
So is that your recommendation?
Yeah, and that's what I agree with. And you know, my take with reading their rationale was is that it just didn't fit the whole state and then.
So that's, that's the one item in all this that you're saying, us as a board should recommend that we don't adopt?
That we agree with them.
That we agree with them not to adopt.
Right.
Is there any that you're recommending to go against IASB?
No.
And I'll go with that, too.
Right, so, so this was from Mundeline School District. And again, I think, I think Laura stated it, you know, very well, this is how IASB spends our dollars when they're lobbying in Springfield. I, I don't know what their relative success rate is in terms of negotiating for additional funding or any of this legislative changes. If you look at their whole book, they have hundreds of policy positions. I don't know how, you know, when everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. So I'm not, I'm not quite sure what their, ultimately their effectiveness is. But I think what I'm hearing here is we're comfortable proceeding with the recommendations from IASB. Is that an agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that makes your life fairly easy at the conference. Okay, we don't need to take a vote on that because that was just a matter of internal policy. So that was good. And here is our auditor.
Right on cue. You meant to get your legs on you, Chris?
I just got a water.
Go ahead. Waters are by Mary Ann and we could adopt, we could go through the bills real quick and then come back to you. So take it to.
Good idea. New business, payment of bills.
There were a few questions that were submitted. The first, I believe, is on page 249, maybe 250, but it was in regards to the admin fees for Amalgamated Bank of Chicago. These are annual fees related to our 2017 bond issuance. They're annual fees for each bond and they cover processing the bond payments, response to auditor requests, and maintaining and updating bond records as well. Board Book page 252. Brain Pop LLC is a software program primarily used in science to walk students through science investigations. Board Book page 286. Mike's concrete was for work done to replace the concrete ramp by door D as well as one of the track surfaces. Board Book page 314. Reimbursement of a parking ticket. We had an employee that needed to park by door L due to a foot injury and the district was in the process of restriping the fire lane, so it was poorly marked, resulting in the employee getting a ticket. We have now, since the restriping has been complete. Board Book page 329 and subsequent pages, those are four officials and we will add that detail moving forward and we'll list what official they were, they were for, whether it be football or basketball, et cetera, we'll list the sport as well.
So it was a good guess, they were officials.
Yes, that was a very good guess. And then.
Why does she keep looking at you on these?
Mike submitted these questions.
Mike submitted.
And then.
It's Christmas time, you, this is our job to review the bills.
And then on Board Book page 341, football tickets. This is a person that was paid the contractual rate to be a ticket taker for a football game.
Oh, okay, so we're not buying tickets.
We are not buying football tickets, no.
Thank you.
Any additional questions on the fly? Okay, moving forward, can we get a motion, please?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the pavement of bills as presented in the November 15th, 2022 board agenda packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Welch. Can we have a roll call?
Slack?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Benhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Durkum?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Seles?
Yes. Moving back up on our agenda, we're going to get a report from our auditor on the annual financial report for FY '22. Thank you for making it this evening.
Thank you, Chris.
I, you know, I apologize. The reason why I was late, I was still waiting on line for my Taylor Swift tickets, so.
Hey, did you get him?
No, I'm kidding.
You already made this discussion earlier.
Oh, man. I'd like to move, I went from Crestwood to Lay Forest, Lay Forest out here, so I'm like, been all over the place today, but for those who do not know me, I'm Chris Skelton, I am a partner with Thomas Marshall &amp; Pease and the auditor for the school district. I had the pleasure of meeting with the Finance Committee, I think sometime last week, so we discussed a few things, so I'm going to be doing a few things, I'm going to go over the audit opinion, do a little bit of a review, go over some quick, some changes, and then open the floor to some questions. So I'll do my best to have Kristen keep along with me. So page one of the audit report.
Which is board book page, go us a second, Chris, with the...
It's on page 42, if you have the 370-page copy. As opposed to the 300...
See, I call them up just by item, it just makes it.
I have 43.
Forty-three.
I have 371.
That was, that was, came out Friday. It's since been adjusted.
Oh, I opened up the one that is...
Without further ado.
All right, 43.
Or two or 43?
Forty-three.
So you have it up on the screen behind you, we're good to go.
That is it. So this may look a little different than the previous years, so the opinion was changed, but really the same effect here. Most importantly is first paragraph one, opinions, I'm not going to read the entire thing, but basically we're saying, or we're saying, I'm saying, that the district did receive a unmodified opinion, which would be a clean opinion for the fiscal year June 30, 2022. Internal controls were sound and adequate, which ensures the integrity of the financial and accounting information. This also promotes accountability and fraud prevention, which actually comes from management and then the board's oversight. Another item I will go through will be the financial highlights, which is going to be on page four.
Board book page 48.
Keep going, Mary, just a little, just so they can see the... Just so they stop, they don't need to see the top as much as they do the stuff under the financial highlight.
Yeah, so these bullet points basically summarizes the audit in a whole here, so, you know, the first bullet point, you know, the board does receive on a monthly basis, their books are on a cash basis. The audit is done on an accrual basis, which that first financial highlight does explain the difference. Basically, under the accrual basis of accounting, revenues are recognized in the period which they're earned and become measurable, and expenses are recognized when incurred. So when viewing these numbers, we should keep this in mind. I'm going to jump us over to page... Just bear with me here. To page 18, which kind of...
Board book page 66.
The reason I'm jumping here is to kind of explain where you see the difference between cash basis and accrual basis, and how you can see how the numbers can skew, especially within Cook County, now...
66.
Page 18, it's on 65? Right there.
They're right there. So you can see the, that total line, the 45 million, the 33 million, those are going to be your total revenues for the entire year. Now, today, Cook County did finally release their 2021 tax levy. Good news for the district, so we can start getting some of these monies that have been owed to us for almost a year now. But you can see there's a difference there from the 45 million to the 33, which mainly is the difference in property taxes. And the reason I'm bringing this up is in fiscal year 21, the district did not receive any 60-day tax collections, so under the accrual basis of accounting, GASB, which is the Government Accounting Standards Board, which is what I follow, basically says we have to accrue 60 days of taxes. Well, in '20, we did that, in '21, we didn't receive anything, so I had to reverse that number out, which substantially lowered our taxes. In 2022, there were no 60-day collections at all, so that basically made that number flat. So the reason why I'm bringing this up is the difference between these numbers is basically timing, right? There's some cash flow issue involved there, too, because obviously we haven't received our 2021 tax levy monies yet either. But the, losing my train of thought here, you know, the difference here is that in fiscal year 2023, that number should, as long as we receive our 60-day collections, should substantially increase. So you're going to see a timing difference here, and hopefully this ends in fiscal '23, but that's basically why we've seen this, these differences in these numbers.
And it's strictly not a district issue, that's just county assessor and the...
Cook County issue and then the accrual issue, that's the main thing. You know, a couple other financial highlights is the district reported a combined net fund balance of about 25 million, which was an increase over last year's fund balance. I don't think we should, shouldn't have to go back to the financial highlights, I'll just read out there. We had some capital expenditures in around 630,000 for various improvements and equipment purchases, Chromebooks, projectors, guardrails, handrails, some musical instruments, and some other technology equipment. Okay, cool. And then another thing I wanted to touch base here was, one change this year was there's a new standard implemented, which was for leases, and there's going to be some detail, and I don't know if it's necessary to go to the page, but...
Just summarize for the board.
Yeah, so basically, within the new lease standard, there's no substantial difference now between capital and operating leases, so they're just leases, so any of our copier lease payments now had to be paid out of the debt service fund. So that's kind of a summary of the audit. Mike, if I'm missing anything, please feel to intervene here because it's been a day.
The only, the only one thing we talked about in the Finance Committee was, this particular year, as you said, they just issued the tax bills, which in a normal year would have been due August 1st in a normal year. So our fiscal year ends June 30th, so any payments that would have been received by August 30th in any given year, under the accrual basis, are pulled back into the prior year.
Correct.
Because earlier, when I asked Dr. Smatana about, all that she reports on is the cash basis, and that's just dollar collections and dollar expenses. He's got to follow some different rules. So in the year we're in right now, there's going to be potentially three collections. If all things get back online with the county, we're going to have this collection that's going to be collected mostly in, let's say, December. And then if we go back to the March collection, we're going to have that on our books. And then if we get back to the August 1st due date, any money we collect prior to August 1st, because some people pay their taxes, and a lot of money that's paid on August 1st with all the mortgages, and then anything paid to August 31st, Chris is going to pull back into this year. So it's not like our revenues are going to skyrocket next year, our cash flow is going to remain constant because, you know, that's what it is. But the way he has to report it, and a couple years ago, or last year when I was here, it was, it was, it was, it was down because they had to pull the money to a prior year, so it didn't get counted. And so it's all a matter of when that money gets counted, but we're going to collect all our taxes that our levy and our projections show, it's just that his reports are going to show it based on the accrual basis timing, right?
Right, correct. And what Mike's saying, too, is what you see monthly is basically whatever goes in the bank is what we report on our financial statements. What I'm doing is I'm accruing items, such as payables and/or receivables, so that's what kind of skews things a little bit. And for other counties, it's very consistent, and, you know, in my world, consistency is key. Unfortunately, Cook County doesn't make things consistent, so it's very sometimes difficult to explain these things in some sort of non-accountant way for people to understand, but I think between myself and Mike, we kind of explained that to the best that we could.
Chris, is there reference in the, one thing is the, is our fund balance, I heard you mention that? But it's not our cash fund, like our cash on hand fund balance. That always seems to be a point of discussion in this district, so, you know, the AFR references the accrual cash, you know, fund balance, but the cash on hand fund balance is about 50%.
Yes, that's correct.
And we used almost, we're going to use almost all of that until we start receiving our tax dollars.
That's correct. And sometimes fund balance and accrual basis can be misleading, so I typically recommend boards, you don't necessarily want to look at fund balance, you want to look at cash because that's obviously what we have available to spend. And with that being said, too, I think sometimes, at least taxpayers misunderstand in terms of an overall fund balance, we do have operating funds, but every fund, with the exception of the general fund, which is your ad fund and working cash fund, those, so the working cash and ad fund are the only unrestricted funds. From O and M through fire prevention and safety, those funds are restricted for specific purposes. Those monies have to be spent for a designated purpose, those tax levy dollars are restricted. The general fund is the only fund that is unrestricted. So when you're looking at it really in a nutshell, what we really can spend is, without restriction, is the general fund. And, you know, last year, we did implement GASB 84, I believe, which then started to introduce student activities on the books. And for a high school district, student activity is substantial, right? You know, smaller districts that don't have many programs, it hasn't been impacted by that as much, but within your general fund cash, you do have your student activity amounts as well.
Typically, you're 400,000 roughly?
Yeah, they are, those are, I mean, we took, for 2022, we had about 2 million in revenues in student activities, and about 2 million out with a cash balance of about 473,000 dollars.
Right.
So that increases, but the student activity cash balance, that amount is restricted, though. That is not, you can't just use that for anything, so.
That's a restricted amount within the unrestricted general fund?
It's restricted within unrestricted, I know, that always makes no sense to me, but that is correct, because restricted just for student activities.
Thank you.
One other briefing I just want to mention is our single audit. Last year was the first year we had to do a federal audit, which is a completely separate audit. That is because we expended more than $750,000 in federal monies. From my projections, we should have one in '23. I believe that should be the last year that we have to do that separate audit. Basically, I'm just, it just basically makes me test more monies, and that's because of the COVID monies that were received, you know, the ASTER and ARP monies. So I'm hoping, excuse me, that in the next couple of years, that can be dissolved and save the district a few bucks, because that's kind of an expensive audit that needs to be done, but nothing you can do about that, it's just following the rules. So I think that's really all I have. If there's any other questions, I will do my best to answer them.
I did not receive any, none were submitted, unless somebody has something tonight.
I heard you say good internal controls?
Correct, I did go briefly over that, I know it's a very...
So that's good.
Yep.
And we got a good opinion?
Good opinion, good controls, that's two most basically important things of an audit.
So it's good.
So fantastic, yes.
That's a great summary. It's good. Comments, questions additionally?
All right, Chris, back to the car. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you so much, thank you.
And you'll file that now? You'll work with Chris to get that filed?
Shake it off. I'm sorry, I will file that, yeah. I did have a client offer me Skybox tickets at the Bears for the Taylor Swift concert, and I was telling myself, if I really do get those, I won't have to sleep on the couch for at least a month.
Thanks, Chris.
Chris knows about my story, being near and dear, so.
Have a good night, enjoy that car ride, you might want to enjoy that.
I'm going to.
Thank you, and thank you, Mike, for working with him on that.
Proposed tax levy.
Thank you, proposed estimated 2022 tax levy, first read.
Propose board page, what's, 3?
347.
347?
Correct.
Make it headway.
That'd be 346 for you, Mr. Welch.
Yes, thank you.
This is the first read. Again, why we kind of do the enrollment projections all around this time, this is the first read for the board. You know, we usually would get this to the Finance Advisory Council in October, just to have a preview on it, but again, everything is delayed with Cook County, so we've had to wait to get their numbers to the Township Treasurer, so that Kristen could put together our levy worksheet, which you have on page 347, and I will let Dr. Smatana walk you through this.
The proposal that you see in front of you tonight, I'll go through some of the important columns, but it is to approve a levy increase of 7%, which is last year's CPI, in order to capture the taxes on any new property. So as many of you may remember, District 208 is obviously in Cook County, and so we are tax capped by the PTEL limit for the levy year. And so usually, that's either CPI or 5%. This year, we would be capped at 5%. And so the draft proposal is to approve a levy increase of 7% in order to capture the 5% increase, plus any taxes on new property. And historically, the property, new property trend shows an average of 1.4 million dollars in new growth. In order to capture tax money on that 1.4 million, which is an average, we don't actually know what that amount is, we need to levy more than 5% so that we can capture that. And so if we look to the chart, you can see that column C is the extension from tax year 2020, and an extension is what the school district is entitled to receive. A levy is what the district asks for. So if you look at column F, this is the extension from tax year 2021 of what we were entitled to receive. As we all know, we've only received about 53% of this, roughly, because we haven't received a second payment yet, which we typically would have received in August. So column K is our levy for tax year 2022, what we're asking for. Again, it's 7% of what we received last year to capture new construction. And probably of most interest to the board is column M, which is the new money we will likely receive, which is just over a million dollars for next year for our operating funds.
So in December, where the board will conduct a hearing, we have historically conducted a hearing, Truth and Taxation Hearing is what it's called. Historically, we have never been over 5%. This will be the first time in my tenure that will be over 5% to make sure we capture the new property and the CPI. As Dr. Smatana mentioned tonight, we are a property, we are part of the tax cap district, so that will be capped by the Township Treasurer and the county, and not to exceed 5%. But we have to go through this formality so that any of those property dollars that are unaccounted for as new property are then accounted for in our total levy estimation.
And we normally do this, it's called the balloon levy, so normally we'll levy 4.95% and then we're brought back down to CPI. So for example, in the past, if CPI was 1.4%, we'd levy the 4.95%, so we capture that money on new property, but then we only receive whatever that CPI is, which is 1.4. This year, because CPI is above it, will be capped at 5%. Fun fact, this is also the first time since PTEL was put in place in 1993 for Cook County, I believe, that we are over, CPI is over 5%. So this is the first time that the PTEL limit of 5% will be applied.
Interesting. I think it's an important explanation, and I appreciate you both taking a turn to it, because I'm sure our constituents and people we talk to will be asking that same question, you know, why do the numbers end up where they are? And I think it factors into all of the financial calculations for the year, and I think you both laid it out very...
One lesson that you learn as a young administrator in your administrative finance classes or in your doctor classes, and this is important to school board members, is once you leave dollars off the table, you can never get them back.
That is Cook County.
Right. So if you said, well, you know, you know, and due to inflation and all this, we're not going to levy the full amount, we lose that for the rest of time. So if those properties continue to grow, or those taxes, that's not included in our formula then for the rest of time. So it's important to make sure you're capturing all property values.
And we're not groundbreaking on this, right? There are other districts in our nearby vicinity who have done this exact same thing?
Yes, when I met with the business official group for West 40, which is our region, every high school that was there at the time was going to levy 7% so that they could be kept at 5. I think one now has changed and is levying under that, like 4.99. And then also reached out to the Township Treasurer, which we are a part of as well, and that is the trend that he is seeing for our Township Treasurer as well. Lastly, I should say, I know this isn't the public hearing, but to be in compliance with a new section of school code, which is 17... a new section of school code, which is seventeen dash one point three, which is tied to a public act, we need to disclose our fund balances for each of the accounts that we are levying for. I've already previously done that in my report, but I've also included it on the levy document as well.
Thank you, Kristen.
Good work.
So the board will see that in December, and will need the board to approve that, 'cause it is due before the end of the month in December.
And we'll do the hearing at the December board as well, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And then the truth and taxation notice is set to be published on November thirtieth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the LifeTouch photography contract extension.
The contract for the district's photography provider, LifeTouch, is set to expire at the end of the school year. LifeTouch has been the district's photographer since twenty seventeen. Back in twenty seventeen and again in twenty twenty, the district tried to receive three quotes. That's our practice. Unfortunately, there are not many companies that can meet our photography needs, as we do ask them to print our student IDs and have a barcode on that, and that is a hangup for some other companies. So we are unable to receive any additional quotes at this time. So I'm looking to continue and extend the contract for LifeTouch. It does generate a small amount of revenue for the district, which goes to offsetting the cost for the yearbook. Particularly, this year, we received eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. The board policy is anything over a thousand dollars in revenue needs board approval, so I like to bring this to the board, because should we ever get over a thousand dollars, I wanna make sure that we are in compliance. But we've been happy with the quality of service, and so we would be recommending that we extend our contract for three years.
And that's a first read.
It is a first read.
Are there any questions submitted? We can move on, I think, to the school calendar first read.
School calendar, again, the, the board used the culture, the superintendent, I'm the superintendent, so I'm speaking in third person. I worked with the Culture and Operations Committee, Building Administration, as well as the feeder school superintendents, to bring the recommendation for a twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar to the Board of Education for a first read. If you go to board page three seventy, I can point out, you know, the real changes are, we are gonna start school on a Tuesday, as the board, as we discussed earlier this evening. One of the other recommendations from the committee is the first day of each semester be a late start. You know, we'll follow our normal late start schedule, and Dr. Freitas will take care of communicating that. We're gonna pilot that when we come back this year, second semester. It's just on that first day of semester, you have kids trying to find their classes, we meet in homerooms to give out schedules, there's some transfers that are coming in, so it just provides everybody kind of an extra hour, students to kind of find their way. Teachers that teach semester courses can rearrange their seating charts, it just provides a little extra time on that actual first day of school. So the change is, historically, we started on Monday. We're gonna make sure that the students have, and the staff are off for two full weeks in August, so we'll have our first institute on August fourteenth, and the first day of school will be Tuesday, August fifteenth, and again, with a late start. We will then be only doing one institute, so that is a change for staff. That second institute, that second day of institute that we usually had in August will now be in April. And we thought, the committee thought this would be a good placement of the second institute day agenda towards the end of April, as we start to get through the school year and are looking at panorama data from the board's goal, and freshmen on track, and all those things, like, it helps us to start breaking down data and identifying interventions, so that we have time to plan it through the summer budget cycle, staffing cycle, curriculum development cycle in the summer, all the above. So the spring breaks and winter breaks were coordinated with the feeder schools, so they should be very similar. So we do go right up to December twenty-second, that will be the last day of finals, with winter break starting on, I'm trying to find the actual day, December twenty-four? Yeah, that's twenty-third, twenty-fifth is really, so really, the nineteenth is the twenty-sixth. But yes, you're, the last day of school is the twenty-second, and you do not return until Monday, January eighth, again, with a late start. Spring break, this is, once, this happens once every ten, eleven years. The last week of March also falls into Easter being in that same timeframe, and so that's also another district holiday. Usually, the district is closed, and so you'll see the week of the twenty-fifth is spring break, with that extra day off on Monday. And that was after discussions with the feeder schools, that that's a similar practice they like to follow as well. So, you know, one other thing you wanna point out is, you know, if you look at this, it's important, so the board understands, is I try to develop the calendar, I try to at least make sure there's one day off each month, because when we start to go more than four weeks with students and staff and full days of school, and, you know, it's some, everybody needs a break sometimes. So if you see this, there's at least a gray box in every month of the calendar to ensure that there's some time to make sure everybody gets their break, or break in the action, as I'd like to say. And so that's the first read on the calendar, and the board, I'm looking for the board to take action in December. If there's no feedback or concerns, it can also be placed on a consent agenda.
And how do the emergency days work again?
You have to lay out the five emergency days, it's just part of the school code that hasn't been corrected, so those are the five Es. But now that we have an approved e-learning plan, we can use up to five days for e-learning, so the only time you really would have to use an emergency day is if something happened, like, on an actual school day, like a pipe would burst, or power outage, and we can't resume school, then you would have to come back for an emergency day, 'cause you weren't able to conduct an e-learning. One of the benefits of, that we've come up with through negotiations over time, is we have a hundred and eighty-six school days, where it's a school calendar, it's required to be a minimum of a hundred and eighty-five, so we have that one extra day built in there. So God forbid we ever have a, a natural emergency, or unforeseen act of God day, I think they call that, that we would not have to use one of those emergency days. So with some things that we've learned from our past practices to put some things in place, so that, you know, like when we had the zoo flooding and everything was, the river was flooding, and we had to close school, we had to make up that day, and then we were trying to cancel school holidays and move things around.
So if we had another river flood, we could go e-learning?
We could go e-learning. If it happened, we're in the middle of the school day, we had to evacuate, we have this extra day built in there, where we should still be sufficient.
So the, the emergency days being after the Memorial Day holiday was technically after graduation, then?
Correct. That's how it's always set up.
People know.
Right.
But that e-learning will help?
Yeah, it, it has for the last several years.
Thank you.
So I don't think we have any objections to put in some consent calendar, but let me know your thoughts. Consent calendar for next month? Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you, everyone. Is that our last matter of business? There's no additional visitor statements here, unless someone wants to come forward. Consideration of items for future meetings. Does anyone have anything on the board? Hearing none. We have matters for closed session, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, student discipline on individual student matters, purchase, sale, release of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety. Can we have a motion, please?
The Board of Education Township High School District two oh eight, Cook County, Illinois, enters closed session for the purpose of considering the closed session matters as presented in the November fifteen, twenty twenty-two Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Welch. We need a roll call.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Oster?
Yes.
Mr. Flatt?
Yes.
And the sixth?
Yes.
Eight thirty-three.